Chair Schmidt, you may begin.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven oh three P M. Welcome to the April eleventh. City of Berlin Game Planning Commission Meeting. For all in attendance today, please note that this planning commission meeting is being held using Zoom webinar format. So you will see that the planning commissioners and staff are panelists. Please note that there are several ways to submit comments during this meeting. You may raise your hand in Zoom by clicking on the raise hand button. At the bottom of your screen, members of the public who are participating in the Zoom webinar by phone can dial star nine to raise a hand. You may also send your comments by email to public comment at Berlin game dot org. Staff will be monitoring emails submitted during the meeting, which will be read at the appropriate time. The length of the emailed comment should be coincurate with the three minutes customarily allowed for verbal comments. If you're the applicant or the applicant's representative. I will ask you to raise your hand when your agenda item is up for discussion so that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. We ask that you also turn on your video at that time so that we can have more clear communications simulating the experience we would have if we were meeting in person. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube and will be uploaded to the city's website after the meeting. Okay, moving on to item number two, roll call. Let the record note that we're all here. Right, looks that way. So now. I'm going to move on to something else. We are honoring two of our planning commissioners this evening for their service. Some long time service. And they will be leaving us after this evening and we'll be getting to new fresh new faces. So with that, I would like to start. By reading a resolution of the planning commission for the city of Berlin game on April eleventh twenty twenty two. Honoring William Loftus for eight years of service as planning commissioner. Whereas William Loftus has served on the planning commission of the city of Berlin game for the past eight years where he shared his professional experience in architecture and construction. To assist and lead the commission and independently pursue his keen interest in architecture to support design compatibility. For the various neighborhoods throughout the city. Whereas William Loftus served as chairman, vice chair and secretary of the commission. Managing the public process of the commission's actions on numerous projects. Whereas William Loftus has made an immeasurable contribution by lending his design insight and construction experience in the city's efforts. To achieve neighborhood compatibility, which has permanently improved the quality of the city's residential. Commercial and mixed use neighborhoods, including attention to details such as materials and lighting. Whereas William Loftus has willingly given many hours of his time working both with staff and fellow commissioners on zoning ordinance update. Subcommittee, which will serve as the guiding principle for land use and development throughout the city for decades to come. And whereas William Loftus will be long remembered by the city. Or by the commission and city staff for his supportive goodwill and professional desire to keep the meetings focused on business and city interests. Now therefore, the members of the Berlin game planning commission extend their sincere wishes to William Loftus and thank him for his insights. And contributions to the city and its citizens for the last eight years, and we wish him the joys of sharing time with his family. That was otherwise dedicated to the city and the citizens of Berlin game. Thank you, Will. Now, if that was not all. I have another one. See if I can move it into the center so I can see it. Okay, resolution of the planning commission, city of Berlin game, April eleventh twenty twenty two. Honoring Richard Torrance for sixteen years of service as planning commissioner. Whereas Richard Toronto has served on the planning commission of the city of Berlin game for the past sixteen years. Where he shared his professional experience in architecture and construction to assist and lead the commission. And independently pursue his keen interest in architecture to support design guidelines for the various neighborhoods throughout the city. Whereas Richard Toronto served as chairman, vice chair. And secretary of the commission several times each. And the public processing of commissions actions and numerous projects. Whereas Richard Toronto has made an immeasurable contribution by lending his design insight to the city's efforts to achieve neighborhood compatibility. Which has permanently improved the quality of the city's residential, commercial and mixed use neighborhoods. Whereas Richard Toronto has willingly given many hours of his time working both with staff and fellow commissioners. On the neighborhood consistency subcommittee, which is. He, which has served as a cornerstone for the city's design review processes. On zoning ordinance update subcommittee. Which will serve as the guiding principle for land use and development throughout the city for decades to come. And on the advisory committee for the new community center project. And whereas Richard Toronto will be long remembered. By the commission and city staff for his supportive goodwill and professional desire to keep the meetings running. Efficiently and focused on business and city interests. Now therefore, the members of the Berlin game planning commission extend their sincere wishes to Richard Toronto and thank him for his insights and contributions. To the city and its citizens for the last sixteen years. And we wish him the joys of sharing time with his family that otherwise dedicated to the city and citizens of Berlin game. Richard, thank you. Okay. So moving on to item number three, I don't believe we have any minutes this evening to approve. So we will keep moving. Approval, item number four, approval of the agenda. Do you have any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes from staff.
Okay, and do you have any recusals tonight?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll be recusing on item eight C fifteen thirty six Columbus Avenue for non statutory reasons.
Okay, and Mr. Chair, I'll be recusing from the same project H C fifteen thirty six because I live within five hundred feet. Okay. And I will be recusing from eight E sixteen seventeen Ralston Avenue as I live within five hundred feet. Okay.
And I wanted to just, oh, sorry, just want to state that I was absent at the meeting for item eight E sixteen seventeen Ralston Avenue, but I have. Read them in the staff report, the meeting minutes and watch the video, so I'm up to speed.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, um. We do not have any study. Oh, we know we need to do a public comment. Okay, so item number five, public comments, non agenda. Members of the public may speak about any item that is not on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to suggest an item for a future planning commission agenda may do so during the public comment period. Ralph Brown Act, the state local agency open meeting law prohibits the planning commission from acting on any matter that is not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. A timer will sound at the end of the time. I may adjust the time limit in the light of the number of anticipated speakers. Please speak clearly and into the microphone. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on any item that is not on our agenda?
Looks like we have two speakers, so I'll bring Mr. Sergeant in first.
Okay. Richard, you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I won't take much of your time. I actually. Parked on Treasure Island on my way to. Lake Tahoe tonight, but I wanted to make a special stop and call into the planning commission to recognize. Commissioner Toronos and Commissioner Loftus and thank them for their service and thank them for everything I've learned from them in the. The seven years I served with. Commissioner Loftus and the nine years I served with Commissioner Toronos. I just, their approach to their work was just real, a real guide to me and on any issue if. If I was on the other side of the issue, it definitely made me think. Have I missed something here and should I be rethinking this? So thanks to both of you. And I look forward to keeping in touch with you. As your service ends and now you can join me on the planning commission alumni committee. Thanks very much to both of you.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you, Richard. Okay. I think we have one more hand up.
I'm bringing him in. There might just be a delay.
Okay, we have Denise Morrow. You unmute yourself. It's your turn to talk.
Yes, it's actually David Morrow, her husband. Yes, good evening, good evening, commissioners. I want to thank Commissioner Loftus and Tronis for their service. They've done a great job. I'm just calling, I'm just calling in right now to make sure that you have received my email with the photos. That I sent in last night and everybody has read those. Okay, thank you. That's all I really have to say at this time, but I will be commenting later. And thank, thank you all for your services, especially the two outgoing commissioners. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Let me check the emails to see if we received anything. No, we have not, nothing that's not on agenda.
Okay. Okay, so.
Yes.
Then, I think we still have Mr. Morrow.
Yeah.
Okay, so now moving on. We do not have any study items nor consent items, so that moves us to item eight. And eight A fifteen sixteen Bernal Avenue. If you're the applicant or the applicant's representative, please raise your hands that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. If possible, we ask that you also turn on your video at that time. Or any commissioners not able to visit the project site or do any commissioners wish to note any expertise communications regarding this project? Saying none, let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site. Can we hear a staff report, please?
Yes, this is an application for a design review for a new two story single unit dwelling and detached garage at fifteen sixteen Bernal Avenue zone R one. The total proposed floor area would be three thousand four hundred twenty square feet, where that is also the maximum allowed. There would be a total of four bedrooms in the proposed house. Two off street parking spaces, one of which must be covered are required. The proposed detached garage would provide two covered parking spaces and one uncovered space would be provided in the driveway. At the planning commission regular action meeting on March fourteenth. The commission continued the application requesting additional information and noting several suggestions for the applicant to consider. The applicant submitted a response letter dated March twenty second, March two thousand twenty two. And revised plans date stamped April sixth of two thousand twenty two. To address your comments and suggestions. Suggested findings for designer view are found on page three of your staff report. Since this is the second action meeting for the project, staff would encourage the commission to take action on this project this evening. That concludes my summary of the staff report. Do you have any questions for staff?
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, with no questions, then I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing with the applicant. Please come forward and state your name and anything else you'd like to add about your project.
Hello.
Hi there.
Hi, how are you today?
Good, thanks.
Thank you so much. First of all, thank you. That's again, we are here and we are, I want to thank from Fozzy and Robin that. They help us during this design process and figure out is that the. As much as possible accurate the plans and response the comments. If you see my response letter, that's we try to reduce the size of the windows that make sure that is about especially the second floor that the previous concern. And we change a little bit in the, we add some details, more details to our elevation. And we updated the grading drainage plan and the landscape plan to match with the site plan. And we try, because we try that respond to all of the comments that the. The last meeting that we already received that we try to respond to all of them. And again, thank you so much and hopefully that tonight we can get the approval for our project. Thank you so much.
Great. Okay, do we have any questions for the applicant at this time? Commissioner Goll.
Yeah, getting, I have a couple of questions. So I see on your site plan that you've got. A two foot high kickboard retaining wall on the right hand side of the driveway. I know that that's not something that's required to be engineered, but I'm just wondering if you've had an engineer look at it because it is also only two feet from the neighbor's house. And my concern is that it may have an impact on their foundation.
Yeah, the owner is here as well. He can answer this question, but regarding your question that we type with the civil engineer. And again, it means that they meet, they meet in the stop side and that's the reason that this fund is coming with this one that we can have only two feet. Is that one, two feet would retain more for here is okay and it doesn't affect the foundation at all.
Okay, then my next question is also in that same area on, on your, on your elevation, on your front elevation on sheet A. Two point oh one, you have a six foot height redwood fence. Is that from the bottom of that wall or is that from the grade at the neighbor's house?
From the grade of the neighbor's house.
So in fact, it would be eight feet on your side, then, is that correct?
No, no, sorry, maybe this might be a curve. Means that we, we don't want to go too high. We want to only have six. Means that if, if whenever is a little upper, means a lower, we try to keep this one as the lower one. If then, if the neighbor is lower from us, for sure, we go be there. Lower means that from the, because we want to have only less fence, not too hot, too, is that?
Yeah.
Like we don't want to have it too big.
Right, okay, well, if you could just clarify that on the plan, I think that would be helpful.
Definitely.
So I am, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, if not, then I'm going to go ahead and go to the public and see if there's anybody who wishes to speak on this one. If you do, please raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any raised hands, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and come back to the commissioners. Comments? Commissioner Tronos.
Yeah, thank you. Having seen the received after that we, we got earlier today, I think it was earlier today. We had revised elevations that showed the corner boards for the project. I appreciate that because that was the. One of, I guess, the only question that I really had, so. That being the case, I think that the project is at a point that, where, that it's approvable. They've addressed the comments, they fixed the, the board and batten. They, the only, the only thing that I note, this is along the lines that I believe Commissioner Loftus was mentioning previously. The exterior lighting, they're still showing a, what looks like an all clear wall sconce, but I think that. That, that light fixture could be, could probably come with a cutoff portion at the, at the upper section of that light fixture. I don't think we need to hold the project up in that regard. I think it's something that can be just tracked as the project moves forward in order to meet the. Light pollution requirements that we have for the city. So generally, I think that the project is approvable. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Vice Chair Loftus.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Tronos and I thank him for getting to that before I got to it because I was going to say the same thing if it won't meet the regulations right now. I think the project's provable and I would move that we approve the project with the conditions in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gold, do you have a comment or do you want a second?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there was a clarification on that fence side, otherwise we could end up with an eight foot fence along that driveway wall. But other than that, I think the project has come a long ways and I find it provable also when I would second Commissioner Loftus's motion with the added condition that the. That the fence height does not exceed six feet from grade on the site.
Any objection, Vice Chair Loftus, to your motion?
No, I would add that's my motion and we should get an FYI on the, or we don't need enough why that's make sure the. Light fixture meets the requirements.
Okay, so we have a motion by Vice Chair Loftus, a second by Commissioner Goll. We already spoke some more. Can we vote?
Commissioner Camarata.
Aye.
Commissioner Goll.
Aye.
Commissioner Foss.
Aye.
Commissioner Toronos.
Aye.
Commissioners Say.
Aye.
Vice Chair Loftus.
Aye.
Chair Schmidt.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero zero zero. An action by the planning commission is appealable to the city council within ten days with planning commission's action. If the planning commission's action has not been appealed or called up for review by the city council by five P M on the tenth day, the action becomes final. In order to be effective, appeals must be in writing and must be accompanied by an appeal fee of seven hundred and eight dollars, which includes noticing costs. Congratulations. Okay. Moving on to the next item eight B thirteen sixty six De Soto Avenue. If you're the applicant or the applicant's representative, please raise your hand so that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. If possible, we ask that you also turn on your video at that time. Or any commissioners not able to visit the project site or do any commissioners wish to. Note any expertise communications regarding this project.
Chair Schmidt, I'd like to make a comment that I was not here for the meeting when it was first came on in February. But I have reviewed the planning minutes and also reviewed it online and prepared to vote on this this evening.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Camarata. Okay, can we have a staff report, please?
This application is for design review and special permits for building height. And attached garage for a first and second floor addition to an existing single unit dwelling. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing detached garage and add an attached garage along the right side of the first floor. A new second floor is also proposed. The total floor area will be three thousand thirteen square feet, where three thousand twenty square feet is the maximum allowed. Four bedrooms are proposed and two parking spaces are required. One parking space is provided in the attached garage and one uncovered space is provided in a driveway. A special permit is required for the new attached garage. The applicant is also requesting a special permit to exceed the maximum allowed building height by eleven inches. All other zoning code requirements have been met. At the design review study meeting on February twenty eighth two thousand twenty two. The commission had several suggestions for the project. The applicant has submitted a response letter and revised plans on March twenty first two thousand twenty two to address the commission's concerns. It received after was submitted earlier today through email and was forwarded to the commission. If there are any questions of staff, I'm available at this time.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, then. Let's see, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. The applicant, please come forward, state your name and anything else you'd like to add about your project.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, commissioners and planning staff. Well, once again, thank you for reviewing this project. My name is Wing Lee. I'm the applicant and also the architect of record. Based on the last hearing. Almost two months ago. Owner and the team went through all the comments seriously and we took a hard look on all the comments. I believe most of the comments are addressed, there are one or two that we decided not to adhere to the recommendations. And I'm going to explain the reason. I think the one major comment from almost all the commissioners was about the. Second floor addition location relative to the existing ground floor footprint. It was suggested, well, maybe the entire second floor could move forward. We took a long time and looked at it and we spent a lot of time going through the program. Last year, basically, we really liked the layout, so instead of. Moving the entire second floor addition forward magically, or we did some minor gymnastics to the architecture of the second floor. So that the second floor footprint stays where it was, mostly is because of the stair or the vertical circulation. So what we did was the existing front terracotta tile roof. We basically extended that all the way to the originally proposed second floor front wall. So that basically does few things. I think one visually, when you are walking on the street or in the public right of way. You can see more area per se of the terracotta tiles, which may be a good thing. In a sense, right now it's all stucko and if you look at the one story building. Seeing a little bit more of the roof or the very contextual materials, which is the terracotta tile would be a good thing. There is also concern regarding the verticality of the addition. So we did few things to soften the verticality of the addition by, well, number one, like what I said, extending the front. Pitch roof all the way to the whole second floor front facade. The other thing is if you look at rendering on sheet A one point zero B. If you're standing in front of the subject property on the left side, we intentionally extend. The roof beyond the chimney. To further integrate any existing vertical element and also the proposed second floor plan. And once again, you will see a little bit more of the terracotta tiles per se. So that also helps the overall look of the proposed application. We also added something very minor like a side wall, if you will, at the base of the front facade. Just to soften the verticality or how the vertical wall transition to the grade. But in fact, they are landscaping there, so. In reality, you will not see the base of this front facade. So I think we addressed most of these comments. Now, there are comments regarding. There's an existing breakfast nook and garden windows on the right side of the existing ground floor. We look at it again and again and we went back to the program with, we worked with the owner last year, so number one. Those two elements are nice, but they were not part of the original construction, so it was, they were done actually or added. Back in two thousand one by previous owner. And when I mentioned about the program, we talked to the owner again and again and the, they just don't need a breakfast nook. And the garden window is good to have, but like what I said last time, the height. For, I'm not a tall person, but I even had a hard time to reach out to the window hardware to open or, or shut the, the windows. The other reason we really want to get rid of that is the active driveway. Most likely, the owner will have more than one car and one car will be stay in the garage and the other one will be parked on the driveway in front of the. Proposed attached garage. It's the maneuvering of the. Car door when you, after you stop the engine, you want to get out and all that, that would be a conflict. On that, and then one more thing is, I think there was a comment regarding. On that, and then one more thing is I think there was a comment regarding the terracotta roof at the second floor continuously going all the way to the back. Now, if you look at the renderings, it's almost impossible to see the roof from the public realm or domain. The owner would like to add solar panel or P V panel down the road. As some of you may know, it could be a very tricky detail in terms of waterproofing by having P V panel on top of terracotta tile and also the maintenance concern over time. So I'm happy to answer any question and I hope that Commissioner would approve this project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for the applicant at this time? Vice Chair Loftus?
Yeah, I'm I'm looking at sheet A two point four at the proposed side elevation, northwest elevation. And I see a window, I see a note for a window that looks like it's just ghosted in there and I wonder if that's a printing error, if that window is is remaining. There's a note that calls out a window that barely shows up, so I'm guessing it's a printing error.
Can I as a?
Oh, yeah, this is a question for you.
Okay, thank you for the question. So on sheet A two point four, the drawing on top is the existing dash demo elevation, so.
I'm sorry, so there's a, there's an issue here. I'm looking at. Oh, boy. I'm comparing two different drawings. I'm looking at A two point three, I'm sorry. Two point three, which is the southeast elevation. And the old drawing, the old drawing shows a window, the upper, in the upper right corner, upper right quadrant of the facade. And it's just ghosted in there on this drawing. Yeah, that one's that, that's not. That's you're you're keeping that window, right?
That is correct. You got me. That's my bad.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't, because it's very, very faint on my drawings, on my printed drawings.
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's.
And Commissioner Faf?
I, yes. I haven't been able to use the right words, but on the second story, I'm, I'm going to call it a ledge or the the top edge of the of your second story. Is it, is it just plain with a flashing or are you going to wrap it maybe with a layer of the ceramic or the terracotta tile kind of, you know, stacked along the edge or just plain, totally plain? I can't see from the rendering and I I don't think it's on the. I'm I'm on page A two point three, but I just mentioned it because I've seen it. I've seen it done on on some of the flat roofs where just the, there's like a cap of terracotta of the same roofing material kind of, you know, caps the edge. Is there anything like that?
Well, thank you for the question. Actually, before I answer your question, I just remember that you also have a comment last time regarding the window seal detail. So we did simplify that. So I'm I'm with you. Less is actually more for this project. Okay, so to answer your question, that double line there you were pointing basically just a metal coating, but we're going to paint it to match the furnished or the color of the stucco.
Got it. All right. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Commissioner Say?
Yes, thank you. I also had the same question that Commissioner Loftus had, so thank you for clarifying that on A two point three. But then similarly, I'm going to the floor plans. I'm not sure if it's the printout that I received or I just can't see clearly through the drafting. There appears to be a number of windows that are being proposed on all four sides of the house that are not showing on the floor plan. And if that's true, just want to see if you can correct that. It's I'm looking at A one point two.
Yep. Well, thank you for your question. So I forgot to mention, I think it was Commissioner, I'm sorry, my eye, my eyesight is getting. Yeah, I I think it was you who commented, okay, there are some potentially drafting mistake or errors. So that's why we put down the window schedule with the number one point one, one point two, one point three and so forth on the proposed ground floor plan to indicate which window is which, okay? So for the windows at the second floor, we did the same thing, two point one, two point two, two point three per se. So to answer your question, yes, we do have new windows on all four sides except the front at the ground floor, but we're still debating whether we should replace it or not. But if we do, the shape proportion will be exactly the same. It's just because there may be some condensation issue right now for those two existing windows with the arch profile facing the front.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. If you could, I can see your window tags on the floor plans. Looks like there might still be a window tag missing in bedroom number one on the left elevation. But if you could just go through your floor plan and and look at that again, I, there just seems to be, I mean, I count one, two, three, at least seven windows, which are shown on your elevations, but they're not apparent on the floor plan.
Maybe you were referring to the clear story windows with which are at a higher elevation and that's why we dash it.
Are they dash? It's, yeah, the printout is so light, it might be there, I just can't see at all any line. So anyway, it just, I can see where you have windows around the house and other areas. I just don't see any in these other these few areas that I noted. And it could be that they're ghosted in somewhere, so you could just take a look at that and maybe just change the light, the line weight or something so they can be, once you're going through permitting, they can see those windows.
Definitely. Thank you.
Okay. If we're done with questions for the applicants, then I'm going to go ahead and go to the public and see if there's anybody in the public who wishes to speak. If you do, please raise your hand.
And we did not receive any, there are no email comments either.
Okay.
There is a hand that just went up.
Okay. Rich? I believe you're already unmuted and I think you should be able to speak.
Hello?
Yep, there you go.
Hi. I'm sorry, I actually did submit an email comment. Was that received?
Yes, that was a received after that was provided to the planning commission. It's regarding, I believe, the concern about drainage and the easement. So yes, we did receive that. The planning commission also received it. It is an issue that is not necessarily under the purview of the planning commission, but certainly under the Department of Public Works. And I believe you also included some staff members from Public Works, so they're they're aware of the email.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Right, that's why, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then let's go ahead and move back to the commissioners' comments. Vice Chair Loftus?
I I like the project. I think that the it's starting to hang together really nicely in a way that it didn't the last time. And I think the solution to extend the the tile roof in the in the way that it's extended is a very clever solution since the interior worked for you. And I, that probably works better than moving the, moving that upper floor would have worked, frankly. But I think the, I think it holds together really nicely now and it didn't before, so thanks for addressing those issues.
Great. Commissioner Faf?
Yeah, I I wanted to to thank you for very, very nice note and addressing all the issues and the that the fact that the breakfast nook was a newer addition and I I think you've done a really great job. I I did just want to address the the, I forgot his last name, the fellow who who did write us about the grading issue. And I think I I do understand that that's quite important and if they can address that onsite a bit, that would be important to put into writing. That's all I wanted to say, but thank you for a really lovely job and retaining a really nice structure. Thanks.
Mr. Camerata?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Faf and I think that the project's very nice and I would like to move this to approval based on the commish, the planning department's notes and that's what I'd like to say.
So do you want to add in about the special permit for height and?
For sure. It's a little, you know what, you guys, I'll let somebody else. I don't have, I'm not, I don't have a hard copy, so I can't look at it. I'm kind of going back and forth on email. So I'm gonna let somebody else do it.
Okay.
Here.
We're gonna go to Commissioner Gall first and let him speak. Maybe he's got a motion in him.
Well, that, I can, but I want, just want to make the comment that I I still miss that breakfast nook or garden window pushout, especially with a sixteen-foot wide driveway. I think that there's room for it. I'm not going to make it pull, pull up the project, but especially in the rendering. To me, it looks very blank and plain with a, with that wide driveway there and the flat wall with windows on it where you did have an opportunity to leave that portion in, even if it was added on at one time, it was done very well. But I would maybe encourage you to do a small cutout there next to the building so you could add some landscaping or something to give that driveway some life. You know, we get a lot of driveways that are nine and ten feet long or wide, rather, but this is sixteen feet. So you've got more, so there's going to be a greater visual impact from the street. I'm not going to hold it up. I would make a motion to approve the project with the conditions I stated in the staff report and I find I can support the special permit for the building height based on the slope up from the street and the the top curve. I can also find the findings or I can find a reason for the special permit for the attached garages as it is. Almost a precedent in the neighborhood. There are many houses there with attached garages. And I think that is it. So that would be my motion.
Second.
Okay, stereo. I'm gonna say that we've got a motion by Commissioner Gall and a second by Commissioner Camerata. And I don't think we have any further comments. I do appreciate the effort put in by the team and it's going to be a good-looking project. So let's vote.
Commissioner Camerata?
Aye.
Commissioner Gall?
Aye.
Commissioner Faf?
Aye.
Commissioner Tronis?
Aye.
Commissioners Say?
Aye.
Vice Chair Loftus?
Aye.
Chair Schmidt?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero zero zero. An action by the planning commission is appealable to the city council within ten days of the planning commission's action. If the planning commission's action has not been appealed or called up for review by the city council by five P M. On the tenth day, the action becomes final. In order to be effective, appeals must be in writing and must be accompanied by an appeal fee of seven hundred and eight dollars, which includes noticing costs. Congratulations. Okay, moving on, we've got fifteen eight, we have what, H C fifteen thirty-six Columbus Avenue. If you're the applicant or the applicant's representative, please raise your hand so that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. If possible, we ask that you also turn on your video at that time. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site or do any commissioners wish to note in the experte communications regarding this project?
Again, Mr. Chair, I'll be recused on this item for non-statutory reasons.
Okay.
And I'll be recused because I live within five hundred feet.
Okay, so it's just going to be a smaller group. Commissioner Faf?
I I just want to say I I had a conversation with a neighbor.
Okay, great.
I'd also like to say that I was absent for this meeting, but I have reviewed the minutes and watched the video.
Okay. So with that, let the record note that all commissioners present and visited the project site. Can we have a staff report, please?
This application is for a design review for a first and second story addition to an existing single unit dwelling. The applicant is proposing to demolish the majority of the existing first floor and a portion of the existing second floor. The proposed project includes reconfiguring the front covered porch, remodeling the first floor and rebuilding and adding to the second floor. Four bedrooms are proposed and two parking spaces are required. One parking space is provided in the attached garage and one uncovered space is provided in the driveway. The total floor area will increase to two thousand seven hundred and fifty-four square feet, where two thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine square feet is the maximum allowed. All other zoning code requirements have been met. At the design review study meeting on February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the commission had several suggestions for the project. The applicant submitted a response letter and revised plans, date stamped March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, to address the commission's concerns. Earlier today, the applicant has also submitted an updated left side elevation. The applicant has explained that they will explain that change when they present the project. If there are any questions of staff, I'm available at this time.
Okay, great. Do you have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to open up the public hearing. Would the applicant, please come forward, state your name, anything else you'd like to add about your project? Jesse, if you unmute yourself, you're ready to go.
Sorry about that, commissioners.
No worries.
Jesse Gursa, I'm here with the owner, Jackson Say. Commissioners, one, I I first like to say, I'm I'm really sorry to hear that Commissioner Tronis and Commissioner Loftus are resigning from the planning commission. I've known them for a pretty long time and they've really given such great feedback with all my projects and I will really, really miss them and I wish them the best luck and I'm sure I'll see them around in Birmingham. So in regards to our project, I'd like to say thank you again for all your comments and your suggestions regarding the shape project. I think we had addressed almost all of the comments that the commissioners had in regards to suggestions on the redesign or or what we could do to make it better. If I could explain what our changes were that we have done, one of the concerns was the height of the building. We had basically reduced the height by one full foot, reducing the the ridge and the top plate on the second level floor. In doing so, we also reduced the height of the windows by an additional foot, creating a, you know, a smaller scaling of the upper windows. We had also introduced some gable vents to to kind of break up the the larger facade of the gables on the exterior. In addition, we had also removed the transom window that was in the entrance and extended the roof down from the the upper level roof to encompass that entry altogether in the front facade. With that, we created a stone wings scoting that was suggested on Commissioner Tronis for that particular elevation to, you know, basically, you know, bring the the height down in visual with with the stone itself. We had also. Let me see, what else? In regards to Commissioner Gall's request to bring the windows together on the right side, we went ahead and combined three of the windows into a combination window on the right-hand side. And yeah, we we did. yeah, we we did, we did quite a bit of changing on on this project to try to to make it approvable by the planning commission. We had my my client, um, Jackson had spoken to the um, left hand neighbor who is Tom Gilden. He is um, uh, he's the what, uh, he's the president or principal of a D S Architects. Um, so he was kind enough to to get back to us late in the game on the weekend in regards to his comments on the left hand side of the elevation. Um, so I revised the left side elevations to reflect uh, what his requests were for those changes, which I passed on to uh, Amalia and then again to you. So if you have any questions in regards to that. Um, again, that was some elimination, some windows that uh, were going to end up looking into his uh, side yard. Um, and Tom was telling us that basically he's looking at, um, you know, what, uh, changing the fence?
He might, yeah, he might change the fence.
Change the fence and and do some landscaping on the land, on vegetation. So we thought that maybe, you know, uh, there would be a little bit more visibility into his backyard from those of those areas of the room. So we removed those windows for him. Um, and I think that's about it at this point in time of the changes that we've done. I I really hope that you feel that those changes were adequate um, for the approval of this project.
Great. Uh, do you have any questions for the applicant? Uh, Commissioner Say?
Oh, yes. Hi, Jesse. Um, one little note, I want to, I was just looking at your front elevation, which um, has been nicely developed. Um, thank you for listening to our comments and addressing them. Um, at the front stoop, um, I'm wondering if you might want to add in one more step there so that your the level between the top of the front porch and the entry through the front doors a little bit more comfortable rather than to have to make a full step into the house?
Will do.
Oh, okay. Um, and then, secondly, did you get a chance to um, talk with or work with the neighbor to your right? Um, um, about their concerns?
Me personally, I did not, but my um, client, Jackson, had spoken to um, David, I think.
Yeah, well, I, when I went, uh, unfortunately, I didn't have their contact. So um, you know, when I went there, it was a bad time that they had some personal issues. Uh, so it was a brief chat. Uh, I told them that, you know, I listened to the, a lot of the feedback from the first hearing about the height, and I said that we would make adjustments, and we did. Uh, you know, I also offered things like, you know, the the fence between us in a very bad shape, and that, you know, I would, I would replace them at my expense. And so, you know, it really came down to the disagreement was the style, you know, and I think that's where I, you know, I I, you know, try to be respectfully disagree where, you know, I understand that not everybody likes the farmhouse, not everybody likes the Spanish house. Uh, but, you know, ultimately, you know, this is, this is a life savings in terms of investment size for us. And we really want to make something that's really, you know, comfortable with for our style and what we believe represents our family. And another thing that the the right neighbor asks is, are you doing a flip? And I said absolutely not. I have two young childrens, you know, one six and one eight, both go to Lincoln Elementary School. You know, we're we're heavily involved with this school, and we also want to be really heavily involved with the community. And so, you know, we want to, you know, make this our home, our dream home where we can raise our daughters, you know, and we can retire here. And so, you know, you know, first of all, thank you, you know, Commissioner, for taking the time, you know, just late to hear this. Uh, but I just want to say like, you know, I want to work with the neighbors. Um, I want to continue to work with the neighbors down the future once we move in. Uh, but I also hopefully they understand that, you know, ultimately, this is our home, and we want to make this forever a home. And it's a huge investment, so hopefully they understand that, you know, this is our 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 taste, our design, that we really, you know, want to have, you know, making the reality.
And if I could add also is that, um, you know, our our design uh, for this project is all in 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 compliance to all the zoning regulations, the height, everything. Um, so we're not asking for anything out of the ordinary other than what we've designed. Um, and it complies to to all those only regulations, so it's, I I don't find it to be anything, you know, obtrusive or or massive. It's it's set back far on the property. It's it blends well as far as we're concerned now we see it. Um, and it's an overall beautiful design, in my opinion, of course, but, you know, un unlike the other house down the street, it's not, I'm hoping that people aren't gonna think it's gonna look like that, because obviously it's not gonna look like that.
Yeah, and then like, I it's, you know, I I, you know, we we walk around East Endish all the time after dinner to go for walks, and there are plenty of new farmhouses coming up. And to some, they might stand out, you know, where they feel like it's too monumental. To us, it's always, you know, it feels really right. It feels minimalistic, a good representation, representation of modern California. You know, we go to Napa Valley sometimes. And it, you know, we're not trying to build a modern like spaceship looking house or something that's square or, you know, you know, we want something that we feel like is is modern, clean, adds to community, and it fits well. You know, and so, you know, I I, you know, you know, it's unfortunate that my neighbor on the right does not like the style, and, you know, ultimately, I'm trying to be accommodating as much as possible, and, you know, again, to heights and and what are other adjustments, but the style ultimately is something that we feel most familiar about.
Thank you.
Commissioner Faf?
Um, yeah, it's, um, I'm looking at page eight eight point four, the proposed front. And I just, um, I think Amalia um, kind of explained to me how what's receding and what is being pushed back, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding the upper, um, the upper drawing, the proposed front on the left side. Um, it it is the, I'm gonna call it the garage area for lack of a better word, the left side, it's actually pushed back, not coming forward, right? Even though in the drawing, it looks like.
Oh, yeah, no, that's that's far back. That's um, oh my, yeah, that's, I'll tell you how far that back is. Uh, that is from the front. That's eight, that's eight feet back. If you look at the floor plan, um, eight point one, you could, yeah, right there, you can see.
Okay, okay. So, um, then I wanted to ask, um, so there, there is no, there is not a stone, the stone that you're using, I'm not gonna call it stack stone because it looks like you you're using a beefier one that's not, you know, a stack stone, looks like a, um, you know, has a good dimension, but, um, so, did you consider wrapping the, um, having some stone element on that face?
Uh, well, the only reason we didn't introduce in that area by the garage is that there's a lot of stuff happening there currently. We have columns that are supporting the shed, a roof over the garage entrance. So, you know, coming, you know, trying to get all these little small pieces in between where, you know, the columns and and the the end of the building would be, you know, would be a little bit, you know, kind of tight.
Okay.
That was, that was, I mean, we could, we could introduce it, but.
Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you, Jesse.
Okay. Um, if we don't have any further questions for the applicant, I'm gonna go ahead and uh, go to the public and see if there's anybody who wishes to speak on this project. If you do, please raise your hand.
We also have one public comment by email, so I can read that in.
Okay. Do you have that first, or you want to go with the?
Let's go with the speaker first, and then I'll read it in.
Okay, uh, Ms. Israelite? If you unmute, you're ready to go.
Hi, hi, commissioners. Um, I wanted to, I'm also a resident of Columbus Avenue, and it's unfortunately, it's not just the neighbors on the right who oppose the design of this particular home. Um, as you probably recall, when you saw it the first time, we felt that it was, you know, a very stark um, house that was somewhat imposing and cold compared to the other Tudor and storybook homes that line our street. And while I I can appreciate that this might be a style that um, that the new owner likes, it does not blend in with the neighborhood. It really stands out, um, despite the fact that it's a little bit different than the one across the street. And that is what we're trying to explain. That looks like a house, but not a home. I appreciate that some changes were made, but really, they are very, very small. So we did um, extend the roof line across the um, front part of the house, which made a big difference. But um, I I feel that the um, side of the house, I think that's the the west elevation, still looks like an Amish dairy barn. I mean, it's completely flat with a long, flat run and several windows, though the number of windows have been um, diminished. And the roof line is just completely um, without character, no gables, nothing to break it up. You know, I guess the the best way I can explain it is that the house seems disjointed. It doesn't really hang together. The you look at the front, and there are pillars in front of the garage, and there's stone going over here, and then there's board and bat, and and it just doesn't pull together. Um, I would be very disappointed if the house is built on our street as presented this evening, and I truly hope that something can be done to pull this design together a little bit better so that it is an asset to the neighborhood as opposed to that house. Um, I um, I think that there are still improvements that are important that could be made to make it look less hodgepodge, uh, especially the front aspect. And I think some, something needs to be done to break up that that long side elevation as well. It's just, I don't know any other house on the in in Burlingame that just has a flat run like that from front to back. I really hope that you can get um, a better design, um, and something that the neighbors could um, could feel like belongs on the street and would be a welcome addition. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you for your comment. Okay. Looks like we have another hand out. Okay, David, if you unmute yourself, there you go.
Yes, good evening. Yes, I am the neighbor on the right side. That is me. Um, you guys have read, you guys have read my letter. I have a sixteen foot A D U going in the back on one side that runs the whole length of my backyard. And then these guys want to propose a twenty eight foot nine inch wall on my other side, which is only probably about six feet from my house. He did come and talk to us on the day my father-in-law passed away in Ireland, and we're trying to book tickets to Ireland, and he wants to talk about his house. I'm really not thrilled with the design, but that's really not the issue. The issue is the height of that house and the windows that look into my side. He he talked to Tom. Tom got half his windows taken out, yet we never had a conversation about taking some of these windows out. Okay, and I understand it's a lifetime investment, just like my lifetime investment. When I bought in this neighborhood, I bought in this neighborhood because I love the design of the Spanish Mediterranean and the Tudors. If I wanted to buy, if I wanted to build a farmhouse, I would have went to an area that where that is common, not to come into an area and disrupt the character of the neighborhood. That's not really how it's done. Um, and in the last meeting, one of the commissioners said that the farmhouse across the street should have never been approved. So why are we gonna approve another one and double down on this just design? The other thing, the height, I I remodeled my house in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and I have nine foot ceiling, it's a top and bottom split level house, and my house is twenty two feet. Yes, they think twenty nine feet now is okay. They need, there's no reason to have an A, you don't need the A frames that high to make this this project work. Like I said, I'm not thrilled with the design, but I can live with it with some of uh, other design things for the front. I agree with Lynn, it does need some work up front. I'm concerned about my side of the house and my backside. Now, I am living in a tunnel. And who's to say the person to the right side of me doesn't decide to tear their house down and but put that up against me also? I just hope the planning commissioners can see my point of view of where this is going. I feel like I'm getting trapped by two people on the side. The one to my right doesn't even live there. He's gonna rent both places out. Okay, so I got new neighbors, four neighbors every year there. Great, Jackson moved here, he's probably gonna be a great neighbor, that's fine, but you know what's really about a house is on the inside. That's where the, that's where a house is made, is on inside, not the outside. We can take you around, I could take you around this block here, around the neighborhood and show you twenty to fifty designs that would be perfect there instead of that farmhouse. I really wish that you guys would really wrap your head around wrap your head around this and do the right thing and make them go back to design. He took five windows out on the other side. Why didn't he come ask me to take windows out on my side that look right into my ba bathroom? Right into it. Now, I can't even, I won't even be able to see out my bathroom window no more. I mean, I I understand property rights, but there has been property rights with some some cohesiveness to that, to the concerns of the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, do we have any others?
Yes, let me, uh, there was a email submitted through the pub public comment, so let me read that.
Okay.
Just give me one second to pull it up. Okay, uh, this is from Christina Haybilt at fifteen thirty one Columbus Avenue. Uh, dear planning commission, I am the neighbor diagonally across the street from the planned building. I'm hoping that the revised plan did indeed try to make the building less imposing than original. It still looks super huge to me, but maybe that's i is an illusion. I noticed that on one side it went from current four to eleven windows. On the other side, it went from current six to fifteen windows. I understand wanting natural light, but also how can someone, uh, how can some neighbor privacy be incorporated? Also, I asked um, that the driveway remain as is to accommodate at least two vehicles. The drawing shows just one vehicle plus A D U access path. Please understand that our segment of the block has already been traumatized by one maximized white, modern farmhouse style building that sticks out like a sore thumb on the block. I also understand that two houses away, a garage is being replaced by an A D U plus tentative plans to expand activity at Mercy Site, contributing to additional future parking congestion exacerbated by additional mercy traffic. Finally, this is a comment to the planning commission. The fact that I did not know an A D U was incorporated into the plans until um, I happened to notice some faint blue lines in the plans is not transparent. This information should be included on the blue project notice postcards that are sent to neighboring properties. Again, this is from Christina Haybilt, fifteen thirty one Columbus Avenue. Um, I can speak quickly to the A D Us. So by state law, if an A D U complies with um, all the uh, regulations, it is not a discretionary review, so it wouldn't come before the planning commission or up for public hearing. Uh, if it complies with all the regulations, then it is what we consider ministerial review or just a building permit. So those are the only public comments we received via email.
Great, thank you. Okay. Um, then let's go ahead and close the public hearing and move back to the commission.
I I believe I saw Jesse's hand up. Jesse, did you still want to add anything or?
Uh, yes.
Made a few.
Before you start with that, let me, let me just clarify what I want. Um, I would say that, you know, obviously you've got some neighbors' concerns and that you maybe didn't have the opportunity to address before, uh, you know, getting here tonight. I can understand that, and I would encourage you guys to continue to communicate because uh, just because we might give an approval tonight or not, doesn't necessarily mean that you can't continue that communication and come up with a solution that benefits both of you. And that could be done as an F Y I to us, because chances are what you're gonna end up doing is reducing some windows, maybe on a side, which is not gonna, I don't know that that's gonna kill us. But uh, so there is a process for you to handle that. Um, uh, and and handle it between neighbors, as long as we get the F Y I. So, Jesse, did you have something more you wanted to go?
Oh, actually, my client, Jackson, wanted to say something for the neighbor.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, absolutely, that's that's exactly, uh, I can commission if we're saying that, which is, um, you know, again, like, as as David mentioned, when I went there was a bad time. I didn't want them posed. Um, and so, you know, the windows needs adjustments, uh, all four. I was not saying I prefer Tom and not David. So going forward, absolutely. Like, like, you know, I, you know, I was telling Jesse that I'm fine with no windows on the side, but he said the commissioner went like that. So, you know.
There is, there is finding that balance so that it looks good, but also.
Right. So again, our neighbors. These are, these are the type of things like I mentioned earlier. I want to be as accommodating as possible. I want to be a member of the community and I want to be good neighbors and invite them over once everything is done. Well, I think we froze.
Uh, you're all right. You're good.
Did we freeze?
No, you did for a second, but you're back.
Okay. Yeah. I would just think, you know, like I, you know, I want, again, I want to be as accommodating as possible. I want to be a good neighbor. I want to invite them over once, uh, the project is done. So, you know, if it's the windows, that's a big issue, you know, and the height, the height we already, even though we are within regulation, we alre- we already voluntarily lowered about another foot. And the windows, absolutely. I will, when there's a good time, uh, when they're back from Dublin, uh, regardless, we will be more than happy to, you know, talk it over with Dave, Dave and Denise on my right side, uh, to make any windows adjustments that can work. Uh, but the same time, the biggest issue is, uh, the disagreement. And again, we, I, you know, want to be respectfully disagree. It's just the, the style, like he, you know, Dave is not a fan of a farmhouse. I am. Um, and this is something I think we, you know, I leave it up to commissioner. But it's just, I feel like, you know, there, other people have had their farmhouses. I really believe that I should too, you know, in that sense. And, you know, I'm not trying to design a weird looking rectangle spaceship. Um, it is a design that we love.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close. Sorry, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and we're going to then move back to the commissioners. Okay, comments? Commissioner Goll.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I appreciate, uh, the applicant's willingness to work with the neighbor on that side. Um, you know, in looking at the floor plan, looking at the elevation, um, I read plans all the time. So to me, it doesn't look like it would intrude as much as the neighbor might think. Because there, there is some undulation on the second floor that steps that, that steps it back and it, it moves it around. So there's, there, there's some character up there, but I think maybe Jesse, if you could provide a perspective drawing or rendering or something of that side, um, you know, maybe from the street so that the neighbor could sort of see how that steps back. Uh, it, it, because in a two dimensional drawing, you can't always read what's going on there. Um, you know, one of the problems that I have with the house across the street and down a couple is it seems to have a lack of landscaping and you can always mitigate a lot of the blankness or the, or the plainness, or whatever you want to call it, um, by, with some landscaping, um, a- along with paint colors, of course, too, is, you know, that, that one across the street is, is like stark white. And that's, it just makes it stick out so much more. As far as the farmhouse style, I don't have any objection to it. I think that this fits in relatively well because of the stone and not having a metal roof on it. Um, it, 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 yes, it's, it's a different style than what we've got on the rest of the block, but I think it could fit in very well, again, with some landscaping and as long as the, the work obviously needs to be done well. The one comment I do have, um, is the covering over the front door. And I'm not sure of the solution. I think maybe it should be a little bit bigger. It looks like the same awning overhang on the, on sheet A5 on the side door. So it makes it look more like a side door. Um, I think it was a little bit too grandiose the first time around, but I think if you could maybe, I don't know, I, in, in my drawing, I just sketched the, that awning going from corner to corner across that facade where the front door is. That might be a solution. It could come back as an FYI. It's not a deal killer for me. I know that Jesse's very competent and can do something with that. But I think it needs to read more as a front door there. Um, but overall, I think it's a, it's a good project and could move forward.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Say.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, yeah, I agree with a, a number of the points that Commissioner Goll just made. Um, I think that I, first I want to say that I appreciate that, uh, this was not a full teardown and a brand new two-story home. Um, I think that, you know, um, Jesse and the client and his client have done a nice job of working with the existing structure and bones of the house and, um, updating it to a look that, um, the client desires. Um, I think that this is a much softer looking farmhouse than the one that's currently on the street, across the street. Um, and I agree also that, uh, with a composite shingle roof and some intermediary, um, stand, standing seam metal roofs here and there, um, softens that farmhouse, um, look and appearance. I think it has a little bit of a transitional style to it with some of that paneling that's proposed at that, um, bay window at the front of the, I think, living room. And, um, and I, I, I like the, the stone cladding that's been introduced, um, in various, um, proportions of the home. I, I too feel that the front could maybe benefit a little bit more with, um, maybe even a full front porch, um, since there's some columns introduced, um, at the garage. Maybe that could tie into the front door area. There's plenty of lock coverage and FAR to work with. There's not some limitation there, um, that would prevent, um, that development that could add a little bit of, um, um, substance to the entry. And I think that I would also like to see a rendering, um, to better communicate. I think for, uh, I think some of us can read three dimensionally from a, um, an elevation drawing, but I think it would help um, others, um, including neighbors to better view what the three dimensional aspects of the massing of the proposed house will look like, uh, with a rendering, um, sub- submitted. On the right side, I appreciate that the clients, um, the applicants willing to work with the neighbor, um, on the reduction of the numbers of windows, um, on that side of the house. Um, I feel that the, um, the shaping of that second story, there's, there's, it's just a very clean, fairly minimalist, um, roof detailing that it's not too imposing a, uh, an elevation um, for the neighbor on the right. Of course, it is a second story, um, expansion. And there is of course increased massing, but, um, I feel that with the reduction of some windows, um, that, and a rendering that so basically demonstrates how the massing looks on the right side. It won't look quite so flat and, and everyone could get a better read on the three dimensionality of that side. But, um, overall, I, I appreciate the addressing our comments and, um, really do, um, appreciate the fact that the client is working with the existing bones of the house.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Camerota.
Yeah, I also agree with Commissioner Say. I think, um, that, um, the house, you've done a great job, Jesse. I think if you could work with the neighbors. One of the suggestions I might even have is if you do some frosted windows, if you need to have the windows in for some light. Um, we had a neighbor who did that for us because it looked right into our bedroom. Um, and so it kind of diffused the light as well and we have privacy. So, um, you know, there are other options. So, um, I thank you and I could see approving this project this evening.
Great. Commissioner Foss.
Uh, yeah, I, I have a similar comment to, um, um, Commissioner Goll. I've been with my pencil sketching the, your overhangs. Um, I think it's not just the overhang on the door. Um, that's not wide enough. I think, um, each one could, could go, I don't know, six inches on each side wider because by doing that, it just pushes everything down. It looks, um, to me, it just looks more, it looks more generous and like warm, I guess is the word. Um, I, I'm not a great fan of the columns, but I understand that's, um, unless it were part of maybe a porch or so. I'm not really sure they're necessary in the back. That's sort of an, another, yet another element that, I don't know, but it's, that's, you know, it's personal taste perhaps, but, um, I, maybe there's a way in, instead to be having a, some amount of stone. So it kind of pulls it, pulls it together, not a whole wall again, but, uh, you know, uh, Wayne Scott type. Um, but it, it's not, it's for me, it's neither here nor there really. It just was a suggestion, but, um, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Um, it may not look like it and I didn't think so at first when I first opened up the package that there was a lot of change. But as I looked harder at it, I did actually see, you know, the addition of the stone, the reduction of the height, the belly band. A lot of little details were added in this go around that do really help, uh, break down some of the more vertical, uh, planes that we have going on in this design. And so I appreciate the effort put in by, uh, Jesse and the client to, to break that down a bit more. Um, and I, and I, I think overall it's going to be a nice project. It is always hard when a second story or, or a higher story goes, uh, on a house next to you. Nobody really wants it, but, um, but we all had the desire to, you know, build our dream homes. And so, uh, that's what we try to do and we try to work within the regulations that the city has set. Um, so, uh, I could see this moving forward. Um, do we have a motion? I don't think we have anything special about the motion other than that we're ready to approve it. Okay, I'll make a motion that, uh, that we approve the, uh, project for the staff report and that's it. One second.
A second.
I'm sorry. I didn't see who so quickly.
I said, I'll second that.
Great. Commissioner by myself, uh, a, uh, motion by myself and a second by Commissioner Say. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Commissioner Camerota.
Hi.
Commissioner Goll.
Hi.
Commissioner Foss.
Hi.
Commissioner Say.
Hi.
Chair Schmidt.
Hi. Motion carries five zero two zero. An action by the planning commission is appealable to the city council within 10 days of the planning commission's action. If the planning commission's action has not been appealed or called up for review by the city council by 5:00 PM on the 10th day, the action becomes final. In order to be effective, appeals must be in writing and must be accompanied by an appeal fee of $708, which includes noticing costs. Congratulations. Okay. Uh, moving on to item eight D, 120, Dorit Road. If you're the applicant or the applicant's representative, please raise your hand so that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. If possible, we ask that you also turn on your video at that time. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site or do any commissioners wish to note in the ex parte communications regarding this project? Did we get our other commissioners back?
I'm here.
Yes, we did. Okay. Okay, um, Staff report, please.
This application is for an amendment to design review for proposed changes to a previously approved new two-story, single unit dwelling and detached garage. The original design review application was approved by the planning commission on February 22nd, 2021. A building permit was issued for the project on October 21st, 2021, and the project is currently under construction. The applicant is proposing to change the approved siding material from board and baton and six inch, six inch horizontal wood to stucco and to change the chimney material from a stone veneer to stucco. No other changes are proposed to the project. If there are any questions of staff, I'm available at this time.
Great. Any questions? No? Okay, then let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. Would the applicant please come forward and state your name and anything else you'd like to add about your project? Okay, you're ready to go.
Hi, everybody. My name is Natalie Hyland and I am the applicant and the designer. Um, so this project is currently under dis- under construction right now. The house has been framed and, uh, the windows arrive tomorrow. Um, a couple of months ago, the owner got a quote from his framer to do the James Hardy siding and it was a lot more than he was expecting. Um, so they started to talk about changing the exterior to stucco. Um, when they asked my opinion, um, a discussion had obviously started, of course, the big one being, well, we have to go back to design review and pay a fee, um, but, but some more other thoughts started to, to come up. Um, one being that when we started the project back in 2019, um, the client won, wa- was going more towards a farmhouse style. And, um, since then, kind of changed, changed their mind. Um, looking back at my notes, I recalled that we originally had a metal roof and, um, we ended up removing that after our first design review study. Um, so it seems like even a little bit back then, we started to kind of veer away from the farmhouse a little bit. Um, and so that was kind of like an interesting, um, chain of events that had, had happened. Um, one of the biggest things that's bothering the homeowner is, um, the seams that would potentially show on the siding, whether it, it be cement fiber or wood. Um, the right side elevation is very long, 55 feet on the lower floor. Um, and I actually have a job site right now where we are trying our best to like hide all those seams. And no matter what you do, it seems like they still keep popping through. Um, so, so they, they do want to do a, a painted smooth stucco. And I, I do think it will look really great. I think it will look classic. I think it will stand the test of time better than the board and bat. Um, that was previously proposed and be a fantastic backdrop to the new landscaping. Um, I think the house is articulated well enough. It, it won't take away from any charm or style. And more importantly,
Can we freeze?
Yes.
Nat- Natalie, we lost your volume. We can't hear you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry. Sorry. I was trying to share my screen, but it's not allowing me to do so. But there, there are several stucco houses on the block and a lot of them are of the same kind of pitch and, and architectural style. Um, so that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Foss.
Uh, yeah, I'm familiar with this project, uh, not because I was on the planning commission, but because it's not that far from me. Um, did, did I understand correctly that you, um, you also want to stucco the, um, the chimney?
Yes. So the owner asked if, um, that could be something we could also stucco. It was originally supposed to be stone. Um, so they're open to leaving it stone, but they would love the option to stucco it to, again, just save money. Everything's just astronomical right now, but they understand if, if that means to stay stone, um, they can respect that.
Thank you.
So I have a question relative to the rendering. Um, have you guys worked through colors?
Um, the colors are supposed to be like a warm white, like not white, because that's what I told them. I said, if they, if you guys turn, make this house stucco, it cannot be white. That won't look it. So definitely warming it up. Um, but the windows are black and the trim will be the body color as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. If we don't have any other questions for the applicant, I'm going to go ahead.
I had questions.
Oh, sorry. Uh, Commissioner Say.
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, Natalie, did you, um, consider with your client maybe some trim details or some, um, details in the gable ends or just some other, um, decorations, if you will, some, um, just to enhance the style of the home. Um, so it's not so, um, blank or plain. Uh, I, I realize it's a very clean look, but it's, um, you know, in comparison to. You know, in comparison to what we had approved, it's a very different. In terms of um. Details.
Yeah, they um, they definitely are liking the clean look um, more. Um. The trim, there will be window trim and it will be wood. Um. But there, there is no, there is no plan or talk to add any brackets or corbels or, you know, no, no, no intention to turn it into. A craftsman or a tutor or anything, just keeping it nice and simple.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Camerata.
Uh, yeah, I was actually going to mention the same thing, some knee braces or some sort of element that can just kind of. I feel like it's just very bland from what we had approved and if there be some sort of element that could be created. To um. Not give it such a blank wall, but I, but maybe you guys can think about that and come back with it to us with something.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and go to the public and see if there's anybody in public that wishes to speak at this time. Uh. I see a hand up. Jesse, if you unmute yourself.
Uh, yes, hi, Commissioner. Oh. Yeah, Commissioner. Um, Jesse Gursa, I live at uh, uh, on Bayswater, uh, around the corner from the subject property. Um, and I I just wanted to give my two cents just because I live around the corner. And um, I, you know, I really liked the previous design. I thought it was a very nice, I thought it was in keeping with the neighborhood. Um, if you go down Dwight on that particular street, I've done a lot of projects on that street. Um, a lot of them have siding, you know, and they have the more uh, uh, you know. Bungalow kind of look to it and so forth, but um, I I really liked that previous uh, material design that it had um. On it when it was approved by the planning commission and and I agree with the commissioners in regards just to it being very stark. And white and um, there really, really isn't any other building uh, on that block that. Would look like that, I just, I just think it'll be very cold looking, in my opinion. Um, and I I again, really like the the previous design, but again, that's my opinion and uh, you know. They could take it however they like it, but I I I just think it needs to be more warm and and more. Uh, part of the neighborhood, it just seems like it's gonna be really, really uh, cold, in my opinion, thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Okay, um, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, go back to the commissioners. Comments? Uh, but sure, Loftus.
It's, it seems to me that there's something very interesting that happened when all of the 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 board and button and the horizontal siding went away and that. It's, it's all related to a sense of scale, I think. Something funny happens to the scale. Um, there was something funny about the previous scale, you know, these board and, I don't know how wide they are, but the the. Vertical board and batten was rather wide, the panels were, I don't know, they, they look like they're a foot wide or something, maybe, maybe bigger, I don't know. Uh, but what happens when those go away? Is that they see, they're sort of hiding the scale, the size of the window on the second floor. Yeah, especially in that front elevation. Um, on the second floor in that that gable, the four, frontmost gable. So I think there's something, something needs to be done to bring the the project back into. Proper scale, everything seems disjointed now somehow. Um, and part of me thinks that it was hidden before. By the, by the scale of the board and batten and the and the horizontal siding, which are quite a bizarre combo to begin with, actually. Um, so I'm not sure this is not gonna be a better house. I think it might actually be a better house if the scale can be brought under control, it seems to me.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Gaul.
There, oh, thanks.
There you go.
Um, yeah, I, we keep moving around on the screen there, I was chasing myself. Um, yeah, I would agree, I, it's, it's become very blank. Um, and I understand that there are other stucco houses on the block, I looked at that today too. But yeah, something changed dramatically when it went to stucco. Um, one of the comments I have is the front door looks odd to me. It it's, it's identical to what was there originally, but it seems like with all the stucco, it doesn't fit anymore. I don't know if it's the columns or or what can be done there, but I think that some of the comments that were made before is. You know, I think in the detailing, we can, we could mitigate this whole thing, um. I am very glad to hear Natalie talk about the problems of Hardy siding. Uh, I've experienced that before, I've, everyone knows, I have never really liked that material. Um, but in the years to come, people are gonna see that it is not this indestructible product that everybody seems to think it is. It requires as much maintenance as anything else. Uh, so I I, I'm, I'm fine that it's gone. Um, I wasn't crazy about the vertical and the horizontal sightings together on the, on the original design, but. I think the stucco could work, but it's gonna need more than what we got in front of us right now. As far as the chimney goes, I think that kind of whitewashes the whole thing of that stuff, and I think that should remain stone. Or something, a different material than the stucco. Uh, just so that it, it becomes an architectural, architectural element as opposed to just a bump in the side of the house.
Okay, Commissioner Tronos.
Thank you, yeah, I had almost an identical reaction as Commissioner Loftus and Commissioner Gaul in that. Um, you know, I wasn't a huge fan of the, the two different sightings originally, but it did give the, the house some scale and some, some detail. Um, you know, uh. So I, I, I have the same opinion that something needs to be done in order to. To give it some, give it back some scale, you know, it could be some more elaborate gable vents, maybe a Wayne scoting of some sort. Um, to give it a base. Um, but it is just, it's stripped, stripped of all of its, generally stripped of all of its detail, other than just some window trims. Um, you know, I like the idea of the smooth plaster, I've been, been a big fan of that, it, it gives some elegance um, to a facade. Um, but not having any detail, I think, is an issue. Um, and it just, it moved so far afield from what was originally approved. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Foss.
Uh, yeah, I have similar comments, I did want to ask, is, is the plaster going to be completely smooth? I'm, I'm actually not a fan because I think it shows errors if it's not, it's not really done well, it. It can look just cheap, but I, I wanted to ask what the intention was, was it that very, very smooth? Type or was, did it have a normal finish? Um, I wanted to ask her about that. Um, and I had, I was not a big, by now you all know, I'm not a big fan of diff- all, a bunch of different materials and different directions on one house. So I'm actually very happy to see it calm down, the, though not. Definitely not with the chimney as well, but it really does. It now, it, you need to build back something and and maybe it would be a Wayne Scott. Um, it sounds like you don't like window boxes or something, that's too cute, if you want something more sleek. But uh, it, it definitely, it, it's just gonna have to have something and and the window, which I see the window, um. I don't know if you already have the windows, but I can, I know I walk by it, it looks like the, the space is already blocked out for the window, but it does look very large to me. So I don't know if it's too late to make that a little bit smaller, but um, if it is, it's, um, it, it is what it is, but um, those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Say.
Uh, yes, I think that um. What I'm seeing is an, another issue that's um, raised by every, all the finishes going to one finish is um. Almost accentuates the difference in the roof pitch from the first floor to the second floor. If I'm reading correctly, I think the pitch over the front doors, four and a half and twelve, and the upper floor is seven and twelve. And with the plate heights being the same on two floors, it's almost like the upper floor is taller than the lower floor, so there's a proportion. Uh, there's an issue with the proportions of the two levels. Um, if left blank like this, and I think that was kind of why I wanted to see something in the gable ends, because it. It kind of reduced the, the height of um, uh, under those gables, at least the appearance of. And I realized that, that, I think Natalie said the framing is now complete, but um. It's not too late to introduce other types of details to kind of. Um, de-accentuate the height of that second story. And which also is making the front door look very squat, I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, um, I agree with pretty much all the other comments. I think where I differ a little bit is, I, I think. I think the uh, three D looks better than the two D elevations. Uh, and what's throwing me is, is the monochromatic of it. Um, I have seen some stucco homes lately where they've gone with a bolder color. And kept it very clean, and I thought they looked very nice. But I think if you end up whitewashing the stucco and the trim. You're gonna get no differentiation, which is what the rendering is showing at the moment. And it's not gonna look as classic as it could. Uh, so I, I'm actually feeling like color could have a huge impact. On the way this turns out, and I would highly recommend. Uh. Exploring some on the renderings uh, to see if that can help you, uh, along with the adjustments to scale. Um. And so. I'm not hearing a full-fledged. Uh, standing behind the change at the moment, and it feels to me like that there's some work to be done here. Uh, is there a disagreement with me on that? So it seems to me then we probably need to propose a continuance to give them the opportunity to work on this some more. And come back again. Is that what we're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Could I ask a, a question just in terms of procedure? Since this is up for action, it was previously approved. I think it might be worth us reopening the public hearing, I apologize, and asking the applicant if they would prefer a continuance. Or a denial, because this is up for action, and by granting them, giving them the denial, they maintaining their rights to appeal. I mean, I, just to see what.
Fair enough.
Preferences are, how, how, how much do they feel about this, or are they willing to work with it, work on it some more?
Okay, fair enough, so then I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Uh, Natalie, if you could come back. Okay, so we have a couple of options here. Uh, one being a denial, which would give you an appeal oper- option. Or a continuance, which we're just asking you to fix it, you know, come back with another uh, stab at it. Is there a preference on your part on which way you'd like to see us go?
Well, I guess I'm also.
I'm sorry, Chair Schmidt, I was wondering if we should clarify that the appeal goes to the city council, not the appeal to us.
Right.
Right, I understand that. Um, and then is there a third option to just leave it the way it is? And proceed with the build and uh, with the.
The way it was originally approved, Natalie?
Yes.
Yes, that's all, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, no. Uh, not that I've run into this very often, but I agree with you, it's, it seemed to me, we possess an approval at the moment. And if you stick with it, I don't think we have any action to take against it. But if you are choosing to make a change, I think you're seeing that you're not gonna get our full support this evening. So you need to pick an option that uh, works best for you and your client.
And, and so if I ask for a continuance, but I come back with, with the stucco, but with some more detail.
Yes.
Um.
I'm hoping that you got enough feedback from us this evening on the things that we're seeing that are not helping us.
Yeah, I, I did, but I also, the feedback I heard had a lot to do with, you know, the actual architecture, so I'm, I'm worried, like, I can't change anything. The windows are going in tomorrow, the house is framed, I can't shrink the size of any windows, I can't reduce the plate heights, I can't. You know, change the size of the front gable, so I, I have to. I'm wondering if I can ask for a continuance and maybe take a stab at some vents. Some brackets, some colors, some trim, some Wayne's coat, put the stone back on the chimneys, give that a shot. And then if, if you guys don't like that, then I can still go back to the original design.
Yes, that, that seems fair, I think you need to look at some of your stick-on options as opposed to.
Yeah, yeah, and I think the client is, you know, blowing me up right now, so they're having a heart attack, I need to talk to them.
And I don't know that it has to be expensive stuff to do, it just, I think you need to do some work. Like I said, I think doing some work on the rendering and and trying to work with colors and things that will help you. You, you know, work with the massing. Uh, and and start to kind of change some of those perspectives.
And and in the past, you guys didn't look at colors, will you, will you consider color as something that helps?
I, I think in order for you to manage your scale, uh, uh, I think you're gonna need to look, look at it. You, you know that a darker color is slimming, you know, whiter color is not. Uh, it's the same on the house too, if, you know, if you pick the right colors, it tell, it tends to create one vibe. And, you know, big white houses create another vibe.
Okay. Okay.
If I may add, um, with regard to the color, we can't condition that it be a certain color, but it can certainly help you. Visualize the mass and scale in terms of this exercise, but the color, we won't be able to condition that color, because that could change anytime in the future.
Understood. Okay, thank you, thank you so much for all of this, I really appreciate it. Um, I'd like to continue it then, if it's okay with you.
Okay, perfect.
No feedback.
Uh, I'm going to ask before I close the public hearing whether or not somebody has decided that they want to speak at this time. If you do, raise your hand. If not, I will close the public hearing and go back to the commissioners. Okay, uh, with that, with the feedback from Natalie, uh, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that this item be continued, um, and that uh, feedback we've given be incorporated into the next round.
Great, for a second, great, uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Foss and a second by Commissioner Tronos. Uh, unless we have any other discussion, let's vote.
Commissioner Camerata.
Hi.
Commissioner Gaul.
Hi.
Commissioner Foss.
Hi.
Commissioner Tronos.
Hi.
Commissioner Say.
Hi.
Vice Chair Loftus.
Hi.
Chair Schmidt.
Hi, motion carries seven zero zero zero. An act, uh, no, this is not an action really, it's a continuance. So there's no appeal, so. That we move on to then sixteen seventeen Ralston, number eight E. Uh, I am recusing from this item, so therefore handing said gavel to Vice Chair Loftus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we'll move on to uh, agenda item eighty sixteen seventeen Ralston Avenue. If you are the applicant or the applicant's re- representative, please raise your hand so that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. If possible, we ask that you also turn on your video at that time. Were any commissioners unable to visit the project site, or would any commissioners like to note in the ex parte communications regarding the project?
Uh, yes, I was not in attendance at the last meeting when this project was presented. Uh, but I have uh, read the minutes and watched the video, um, and I'm up to speed.
Good, thank you.
Uh, I also was not at the last meeting, but have watched the video and reviewed the, the minutes from the meeting.
Great, thank you as well. Uh, let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site, uh, may we hear the staff report, please?
Sure, this is an application for design review for a first and second story addition. To an existing single-unit dwelling at sixteen seventeen Ralston Avenue, Zoned R one. The total proposed floor area would be three thousand one hundred seventeen square feet, where three thousand two hundred sixty-four square feet is the maximum allowed. With this application, the number of bedrooms in the main dwelling would actually be decreasing from five to four. Uh, two parking spaces, one of which must be covered or required on site. One covered space is provided in the garage and one uncovered space is provided in the driveway. At the Planning Commission Design Review Study Meeting on March twenty eighth. The commission had some suggestions uh for the applicant to consider. The applicant submitted a response letter dated March thirtieth and revised plans date stamped March thirty first. To address your comments. Uh, suggested findings for design review are found on page three of the staff report. And this concludes my summary, do you have any questions for staff?
Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? Okay, seeing, hearing none, uh, I'm going to open the public hearing with the applicant, please come forward and state your name. And anything else you'd like to add about your project?
Hello again, uh, Bob Bryant here, Flory Bryant Design Group, we're the designers of the project. Um, uh, thank you all for your input at our, at our last meeting. Uh, we've incorporated, I think, most of your suggestions. Uh, and those are outlined in the uh response letter. Uh, I think, uh, the one thing that we. Uh, did not do that I think was suggested was the uh side porch roof off of the, over the garage door. There's a uh, a building code, California residential code that limits. Uh, projections to uh no closer than two feet to a property line. And so that would uh limit our. Uh, roof projection to about twenty-seven inches or so, which didn't seem like. Enough to really provide any cover for the door. Uh, and maybe more of an inconvenience for um. Access to the rear yard along that side. Um, the uh, the, uh, I, I think it, it. While it, it seemed like a good idea on a two-dimensional drawing, it just, when we, when we played around with it, it just didn't seem. Uh, a very practical solution. Um, so, um, that's all I have, open to hearing your comments.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant? Well, it looks like we've got no questions for the applicant. Um, in that case, uh, do, I'll ask whether we have any members of the public who would like to speak on this item. I'm not seeing anything. Ruben, anything?
Nothing came in via email either.
Okay, all right, uh, then I'll close the public hearing, commissioners, comments? Commissioner Foff.
Uh, yes, um, thank you for listening so carefully, and also it looks as if you. Changed out a bunch of windows on the side, um, unless I missed something that they, they were, that was not done before. And I know it's cost a lot of money to do that, but it kind of makes everything hang together much better. Uh, I did have one, um. A question comment, you, it looks like you did change the pattern on the window, the windows themselves, which is fine, but um. Did you, uh, you deep six the shutters, which actually thought they were really nice. Kind of blended with the garage door really well, but um, was that the preference just to pare it, to, to pare it down way, way further? Um, just was curious.
So the uh, public hearing is closed.
Sorry, 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 yeah, so. That's right, yeah, oh, no, then I'll just say, um, I'm missing this, but um, otherwise, I, I really think you. You simplified, there was a lot going on, a lot of different styles, and I think it was um an improvement, definitely, um, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Toronos.
Yeah, thank you, uh, yeah, I really appreciate the revisions, I agree with Commissioner Foff. Um, you know, the, the revision or the, the addition of the muttons on the windows is subtle, but I think it does a great job of. Giving a little scale to those openings and tying them uh together around the, the various facades. So I appreciate that, um, as I said before, I think that this project is actually adding. Adding some charm to something that otherwise didn't have much, um, and I think it's a good project, I think it should move forward, thank you.
Okay, um, any other comments? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Toros.
Sure. Make a motion to approve the project for design review, I can make the findings for the major criteria as indicated in the staff report. Um, and I think it's a good project, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Toronos and uh second by Commissioner Gaul, uh, is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, then may we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Camerata.
Hi.
Commissioner Gaul.
Hi.
Commissioner Foff.
Hi.
Commissioner Toronos.
Hi.
Commissioner Se. And Acting Chair Loftus.
Hi. Um, so we, the motion passes then, if I got it correctly, six zero one zero.
That is correct.
Okay, an action by the planning commission is appealable to the city council within ten days of the planning commission's action. If the planning commission's action has not been appealed, we're called up for review by the city council by five P M on the tenth day. The action becomes final. In order to be effective, appeals must be in writing and must be accompanied by an appeal fee of seven hundred eight dollars, which includes noticing costs. Congratulations. So. Welcome back, Chair Schmidt.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, moving on to design review study items, uh, nine A three zero eight zero Guolet Drive. If you're the applicant or the applicant's representative, please raise your hand so that we may be prepared for you to speak at the appropriate time. If possible, we ask that you also turn on your video at that time. Were any commissioners not able to visit the project site, or do any commissioners wish to note any ex parte communications regarding this project? Okay.
Yes, sorry, I did, sorry.
I was waiting for that.
Um, yes, I had the opportunity to speak to um, the neighbor to the left of the applicant. Um, Catherine and um, Andrew, um, sorry, I forgot the last name, um. Chang, I believe, sorry, but I met the neighbors to the left and had a chance to. Um, they were kind enough to give me a tour of their home, so I could see the uh potential implications of their distant bay views.
Great. Okay, let the record note that all commissioners present have visited the project site, can we hear a staff report, please?
Yes, this is an application for design review and Hillside Area Construction Permit for a second story addition. To an existing single unit dwelling at three zero eight zero Arguela Drive, Zoned R one. A new accessory structure, a storage um structure is also proposed at the rear left side of the lot. The proposed house will have a total floor area of four thousand twenty-five square feet, where four thousand twenty-nine square feet is a maximum allowed. For the Hillside Area Construction Permit, review by the planning commission shall be based on whether or not there are any impacts to existing distant views. And those are to San Francisco Bay, the San Francisco Airport, East Bay Hills. Um, from primary indoor living areas, and those living areas are generally accepted as living rooms, family rooms. Uh, recreation rooms. Uh, with this project, the number of bedrooms will increase from four to five. Three parking spaces, two of which must be covered are required on site. Two covered parking spaces are provided in the attached garage and one uncovered space is provided in the driveway. Um, I did want to point out, um, a correction in the staff report on your uh development table on page two. Um, currently we show the maximum allowed height as twenty feet. Those generally are for steep sloping lots, this lot does not qualify. Um, as that, so the maximum height allowed is thirty feet, and the proposal is at twenty-five feet eight inches. Um, you also wanted to highlight that you did receive a received after today from Catherine and Andrew Wong at sixteen eighteen Escalante Way. So you have that, and there are two public comment emails that um, I'll go ahead and read during that time. Uh, do you have any questions for staff?
So do we have any questions at this time? Okay, uh, Commissioner Foff.
Yeah, I, um, it, it has more to do with, um. The process of, of uh. Getting, um, a roof replaced, if you're in that neighborhood, um, is there any? I understand that the, the folks behind this home, um. They, as part of their remodel, they got a different roof than, than what was there before, and I'm, I'm asking generally, is there? Would there have been a, any kind of review as far as materials go, um? Uh, to compare what is there in that subdivision, that I think it's a sixty subdivision, um, and if it were, was compatible at the time. Uh, and I know that house, we're not talking about that house, but this one also has a metal on it, so um, I just wanted to know if, if that would have. Completely gone unnoticed until it was on the house.
No, uh, so a re-roof permit is an over-the-counter ministerial permit done with just a building permit.
Um, and that may have been also part of a remodel, for example, so anything that does not.
Trigger a Hillside Area Permit, for example, uh, an addition, um, would not have become before you for review. Those are all ministerial permits.
Great, thank you for explaining.
Okay. Great, um, if we don't have any more questions for staff, then I'm going to open up the public hearing. The applicant, please come forward and state your name and anything else you'd like to add about your project.
Good evening, um, my name is Hin Sang, I'm the applicant, I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of the commissioners uh for reviewing our initial design. This has been quite a long process for us, uh, my family has been looking for a home for quite some time, and uh, we've. Found a house that has potential, unfortunately, it wasn't exactly what we hoped it would be, but our budget and uh. Our savings are limited, and uh, we're hoping that this project is uh something that you may. Give us your input and insight on, and uh, hopefully we can move forward. Uh, with that, I think I'll turn it over to my architect, Andrew and Jack.
Hmm. They're, I'm bringing them in now, so they. There we go.
Hello, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi, uh, good evening commissioners and uh planning staff. My name is Andrew, uh, the project designer from Team Seven and for the projects. A little bit stories, I think you heard from the owner, uh, Hin. Um, he has a grown family and also planning to expand the family a little bit more. So think that intention for the project is to just, we need more space, they need more space, and more living space, and more playing space in the playground. So, the intention for the design actually, um, is to try to blend in. The new design within the existing context, um, try to merge the design seamlessly. To the surrounding while maintaining the existing house form. Uh, by keeping existing wall as much intact as possible, and also replacing with a minimal standing seam kind of a metal roof. Um, to give it a modern take for the projects, for the house. Uh, also a little bit backgrounds for the design, behind the design. Um, before anything started for the projects, uh, owner Hin. Is aware that the Burlingame Hillside has a protective, you know, uh, hillside protection requirements. Um, so we did, and he suggests that we should have some creative solution. To mitigate view protection issues, um, that our design should um mitigate. Uh, the, the issues that the, that vertical extension might create. So, even before we started, um, we had the surveyor, psych surveys. Uh, to indicate the neighbors, um, pitch root, the roof pitch, and also the window sill height. Um, so that we can analyze the height of the view of the new additions that it might be impacting. Um, also, for the new addition, uh, we did a lot of studies of how the placement of the. Vertical extension, uh, which axis will create least impact visually to the surroundings. Um, one approach was to have the. Extension towards the Aguero Street, uh, and then that will be. Creating more imposing frontage, um. Um, feelings to the, to the, to the pedestrians and, and people, and residents. And the other axis that we place in right now, the north and south axis, it gives a little bit more of a. A, a, a pushback, a little bit more of a, a secluded sort of a hidden kind of a feeling to the projects. Um, also, we try to keep the vertical addition height in a minimum. The new addition race, uh, that we raised up is six foot ten above the existing ridge. So, in that sense, we try to make it as low profile as possible, less impact as possible. So with the geographic setting on a downhill slope site, and also with the um existing vegetation condition. There is two large trees between um our properties and then the concerning um, uh, neighbors. Uh, which serve as a visual buffer zone and also a privacy screening. So we believe that from the beginning, uh, and also that the, this vertical extension would result in the least impact as possible as we could to the neighbors. Yep, and that's all for, I have for now, yeah.
Okay. Great, uh, do we have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Toronos.
Yeah, just one simple one, um, am I correct in presuming that the roof framing over the. Existing living room and the existing first floor, is that going to remain, or is that roof framing being replaced as well?
Uh, which will be remain.
Okay, so then the front fascia, the gabled fascia rake that's facing, that's over the living room on the front facade?
Yes.
That existing fascia, is that's going to remain?
Um, I think we will do try, try our best to repair and be. Um, con- conform and updated to a form that it matches the whole context of the building. So, at the moment, we would think it. Will, it will have to match the new style, so some changes might ha- might occur, but we will try to keep it as. As least uh intrusive and more, um, you know, um, coherent as possible.
Okay, well, the reason I ask is, along the lines of style, you're saying that, that what you're, what you're trying to, or tending towards, or wanting to try to achieve is something more modern?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, the reason I ask about that fascia, and I'm not trying to, you know, be picky, but if you look at the context of the existing neighborhood. There are a lot of, you know, mid-century homes that are relatively simple ranch style, et cetera, but. The fascias are, you know, maybe a, a one by eight or, or something in that range. And the fascia that you're showing scales at about an eleven inch board. And I don't know if that's the intent or not, but it's offering just a big scale, it doesn't give any sort of. It doesn't fit within the context of the neighborhood, and I'm not seeing it as adding to sort of a, a modern character, so. Uh, I think it's something that you should look closely at, um, otherwise it becomes just a one big fascia board that looks like a tract home, quite frankly.
Okay, we, we tried to avoid that, yes, we, we, okay.
My only question for now, thank you.
Commissioner Gaul.
Yeah, thank you, um, I have a number of questions, first off, um, getting back to that. Um, that exterior trim around the windows, right now, there's a, on my gun, that front window, there's a, about a. It's a six inch and it's a molded, um. Casing around that window, is that going to stay, or are you gonna remove that altogether?
Um, to the modern aesthetic, we might try to take stream downs, uh, streamline the. The molding and trims, so it might be a very minimal profile, but not, we will have some profile around the windows, probably. Maybe two inches or three inches, but not as ex- uh articulated as the one from the existing.
Okay, that would be helpful if that was shown on the drawing and maybe a detail on that.
Okay, we'll do that.
Let's see. Let's see. Okay, so the skylights that you show, are those going to be flat glass or are those going to be acrylic? They're not noted.
You know what, that will really depends on the cost, but I would think they should be glass at the moment. Or any any particular preference that you the commissioners you guys have?
Well, the I think as a as a general rule, we like the flatter glass ones as opposed to the acrylic dome types. These tend to rise up and 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 look a little cheap, if you will.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the window on that, like, for example, on the front, when you say existing aluminum clad window. That, to me, when I was there, looked like it was a vinyl window with internal grids and it's and it's a replacement window. So it was placed over that trim. So it looks to me, as a as a general contractor, that that window would need to be removed and reinstalled. If you were to to use it. But the question then becomes, are you going to replace all the windows or are you going to leave the existing windows?
Um, I, you know, at this moment, we would tried, we would replace all the windows, I I would say, yeah.
Okay, again, if you can note that on the plans when this comes back. Okay, on the second story on the front elevation, you have just one small window. Have you looked at other options there?
Uh, that is.
A little bit of something on the second floor.
And that is actually right at the staircase. We could look at investigate sometimes and look into it and see what we can do. I understand what you your concern is, it just looks like a little punch hole in the wall and just not very aesthetically pleasing, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, if you'd look at that. Then lastly, if you could maybe, the have you thought about the front landscape plan, there's an awful lot of brick there. And I think that the site could be softened up if you maybe were to remove that and do some planting there. And if you could, you know, extrapolate on that a little bit on the on the landscape plan and draw it out, you know, a little bit more, showing the the vegetation and the plants, that would be helpful.
I think that will be the next task, yes, definitely.
Okay. And I know you said that you spoke with an engineer about the sightlines of the of the neighboring house. And you know, people go back and forth all the time, but we're most likely, and I I think you're going to hear from other commissioners, we're going to probably require story polls on this. Have you looked into that yet or you understand that that's probably going to be a condition here? Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair Lopus.
Yes, thank you, could you talk to me about why the standing seam metal roof?
Um, I think in terms of fire prevention, that was one of the concern, that fire standing steam metal roof was of in the in in the brainstorming sessions. And also because we drove, we drove around and we got to the site. And the house actually on top, on the left of the of of our properties, they do have a similar roof that we thought looks pretty good. I think that was the reason why we want to maintain that. And because it's just right next to it, we think that it it will blend in well. And I think that is also the minimal modern aesthetic that we are trying to achieve here as well. So that was, I think, the three reasons that we kind of go with that standings metal standings metal roofing.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Say.
Yes, thank you. So Andrew, you mentioned that likely all the windows will be new. And currently looking at the four elevations, there there appears to be different size pains being proposed around the house. So maybe your next go around, if all the windows are going to be replaced, you can maybe clarify or simplify which you want to propose. And especially in light of the fact that you've noted that you'd like the house to look more modern, that maybe you keep that in mind as well in the mountain details that you propose and the number of grids per window.
Okay.
Um, and what else was I going to say? Did you consider any other massing opportunities for on the left and the, no, I think it's the rear and side rear and the left elevation, that second story is completely on the same plane as the lower floor. Did you consider any other ways of articulating that second story addition?
Um, we we had, we were trying to look at it from the structural standpoint and also the construction standpoint. We try to think of it as a continuous wall. And in terms of structural and constructability, in this sense, will be a more friendly, budget friendly to the owners. So I think that was one of the reason that we did that. And I I frankly speaking, that's that's all, yeah, we we have in mind for for that particular facade face of the wall, yeah.
I wonder if you want to think about it more for, I mean, I know it's a nice sized backyard. But if one is in that backyard, enjoying it, it, you know, just that very flat tall face of that right left elevation facing the yard, how that might feel to the inhabitants, just using the yard, just just for consideration. And then lastly, I understand from reading the your neighbor on Escalante's submission to the planning commission that there's been some discussion about addressing the vegetation that's overhanging their property. And is are there any plans for addressing what's looks to be a pretty extensive you know, branch overhanging and 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 dead branches that are hanging over their property line?
I will let the owner speak on that matter, yeah.
Okay.
Hi, yes, actually, we've been in contact with Andrew and regarding this. And we've contacted actually four different arborists. And due to the bark beetle, I guess, infestation in the Burlingame area, they advised us to not trim like live branches until November through March. And this is from multiple arborists. But in in the meantime, we have contacted Arborist SF and they are going to come and take care of all of the dead branches, all of the dead fall and trim back anything that is two inches hanging over on their side. Anything over two inches, they say it will inherently might stress out the tree. I can submit those proposals to the commission for review if you'd like their estimates. I've gotten four different ones.
Oh, yeah, maybe it doesn't need to come before us, but maybe you continue to work with your neighbor to ensure that you don't cause a
Contact with them regarding it, but you know, I I know that they've also located an arborist as well. And their arborist indicated otherwise, but you know, we wanted to get numerous opinions on this. But the bark beetle issue is a huge issue, I guess it's prevalent down the street from us, I'm not really sure. It it kills the stone pine trees, of which we have, I think, four of them in our backyard currently, so you know. But yes, we will be taking care of that as soon as the arborist has time, actually. So we we have come to someone that will clear out the dead branches.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
No problem.
Okay. So any further questions for the applicant? Then I'm going to go ahead and go to the audience and see if there's anybody out in the public that wishes to speak on this item. If so, please raise your hand now. Okay, not seeing any. Rootman, did we have any emails for this one, right?
Yes, we have two, so let me I pull them up real quick here. Okay, the first is from Wayman and Christina Wong at three one two five Rivera Drive. We received a public hearing notice regards to our neighbors' proposed two-story project at three zero eight zero Arguello Drive and we reside diagonally across from their backyard. We made it clear to the owners during their open house meeting, we are not in favor of this project and voiced our concerns. We oppose the two-story project due to the obstructing of our view, which in turn will depreciate our value, property value when and if we decide to sell in the future. This two-story project will majorly affect our neighbor to the right, whose backyard is back to back with your Guella Drive neighbor. Our neighbor has a ranch style home and with the addition of the second story on our Guella Drive, our neighbor will lose their privacy and major sunlight coming into their backyard. As for our neighbor behind our backyard, their view of the airport will be completely disrupted. The noise level during construction is also another concern. We babysit our infant grandson who will need the nap during the day. With the construction noise, his naps will be majorly interrupted. We have lived in this neighborhood for twenty years and love the peace and quiet this neighborhood provides. We do not appreciate a new owner joining our neighborhood with intentions of disrespecting the housing around them. We are now prepared to, we are not prepared to depreciate the value of our home while the new owners are only looking to raise the value of theirs. Please consider the impacts this will have on the surrounding neighbors if the project is approved. And we also received another email from Catherine and Andrew Wong at sixteen eighteen Escalante. They did submit a received after letter, but they also wanted to share this public comment. We, the owners and occupants of sixteen eighteen Escalante Way oppose the proposal to add a second floor. Our primary reasons are, number one, the impact to our existing view of bay waters, Mount Diablo, East Bay, airplane descent path and the local Berlin landscape. Number two, the loss of privacy. Number three, the inability for us to adapt to the changes, given that we completed a three-year renovation in twenty twenty. We invite the planning commission to visit our home to see the existing bay views live and have also submitted a letter containing photos. To provide additional detail, our home currently has a beautiful view of the bay waters and East Bay. The second story addition at three zero eight zero Agüello would completely eliminate and or impact this view from two bedrooms and the first floor. This was previously communicated with the architects and owners of thirty eighty Agüello Drive. We also updated our backyard with a terrace and metal retaining wall to enjoy the view from outside. We would also lose this view with the addition of a second floor. Any windows facing our property from the second story would impact our family's privacy, particularly from two bedrooms and the family room, kitchen, dining room and backyard. With our renovation, we made major changes to the first floor layout in order to create a family space centered around the back half of the house. We added two large sets of floor to ceiling sliding doors and windows and enlarged all other east facing windows. To ensure privacy, we replaced the previous three-foot fence between our property and thirty eighty Agüello with a six-foot metal fence. If thirty eighty Agüello added a second story, we would lose all privacy from both inside and outside our home. We are very concerned about the obstructed views and loss of privacy. Thank you, and we look forward to arranging a visit to our home. And that's all we have.
Okay, great. Then we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and come back to the commissioners. Comments, Commissioner Tronos?
Yeah, thank you, so the two issues we have before us are design review and hillside area construction permit. In terms of the design review, the architect stated that the homeowners needed more space, which so it looks like they've achieved that. And that they were going for a minim- minimal modern aesthetic. And he also made the statement in regards to budget friendly massing and and the facade. And my concern is that I I'm not seeing minimal modern, a minimal modern aesthetic. If there's some efforts to try to reference the uphill neighbor on Escalante at the corner, I would note that that uphill project has has more detail, particularly around the facade, the entry area of the facade. It has more detailed garage door in terms of the materials. It has the board and bat materials that are in the gable ends. So there's there's just more scale and and reference that has been done there. And I'm not, I'm not wholly trying to compare the two, but they made some reference to at least the metal roofing that they were that they were referencing on their project. So you know, when I, the reason I mentioned the the fascias and and things of that sort is because I just see sort of a clumsy stucco box, I'm not seeing a lot of detail, I'm not seeing any charm. The existing charm on the front facade with the shutters, the dentals that aren't aren't shown in the drawing, but actually are there in the gable front is and the brick that's there is is being stripped. And a stucco box is going back in its place. It definitely, I could see being budget friendly, but unfortunately, that ends up manifesting as just plain and simple stucco. So I have have those concerns in terms of the design review and being able to make the findings for context within the neighborhood and and the architecture. In terms of the hillside area construction permit, I think that there's no choice but to have story polls erected before this comes back for for action. While all the while, they may have surveyed, inventoried and taken into account specific window sill heights, etc. of uphill neighbors, we've seen too many occasions in which there might be a neighbor, in this case, maybe on Rivera on a backside or some distant neighbor that has a view that that couldn't be accounted for with their design if they were just looking at adjacent neighbors. So I think story for story polls are critical for this project to move forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you, I'm going to go out of order by choice, and I'm going to pick on Commissioner Say. Given that she mentioned she has actually been into said into the property on Escalante, it might have a little bit of opinion to add to this before we go into the other the others, so you're up, Commissioner Say.
Oh, yes, thank you. I, yes, I did get a chance to look at all the rooms where there were potential view implications by from the addition, the proposed addition at thirty eighty Agüello. At this time, I cannot tell without story polls being installed to see whether there would be a distant bay view implication for any of the rooms. I'll say their best views from their home is their upper level where they have a nice, large windows from their all their bedrooms looking out towards the bay. Those are not, of course, main living spaces, but definitely the windows were sized and placed to enjoy the the views from from the upper floor. So I did not see, from what I can tell, any view implications from the proposed addition from the main floor of the house. And again, I think the story polls will help to to demonstrate that. There is a bit of a view of Mount Diablo that is visible from their family room space between some trees. It's not a large view, there is a view of that Mount Diablo area from a specific part of the room. And so again, I I think the story polls are going to help to demonstrate that. I think the applicant has has some issues to contend with with the the design of the home and and definitely in terms of the accurate rendering of materials and dimensions and scale of 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 particular building elements. But I do think they were considering any view issues by
Great, thank you. Vice Chair Lopus.
Thank you, Chair Smith, so I'm generally not a fan of standing seam metal roofs, but this is a neighborhood where you might pull it off. What bothers me, though, is that the this doesn't feel like it's very modern. It feels like, feels like you said, you said you're going to a party and you're kind of late and you're sitting around in your jeans and a T-shirt and you throw on a dinner jacket. You sort of throw on a dinner jacket to be dressier and and it just doesn't work. It just doesn't hang together and it's it's just, it's very, it's very formulaic. This is a ranch house with a, this is a ranch house with a standing seam metal roof with no other apparent changes to address its being modern. You know, an Eichler is what you would find in this sort of neighborhood. And they they're, they don't need a standing seam metal roof, they are, they are they're, they don't need a standing seam metal roof. They are, they are modern in their spatiality. They're modern and they down to their core. And this is just, you know, dressed up modern. Uh, it doesn't feel like much attention has been paid to design here. And you know, my inclination would be to send this to design review. I I just don't see, I don't see, there's, it's not very thoughtful, thought, thought out, well thought out. It's the, it's just sort of slap, slapdash, I think. And clearly, the, there's the view issues and all that, but it's the design that that I think bothers me the most is it doesn't feel like it's trying very hard. And certainly not modern.
Uh, Commissioner Camerota.
Yeah, I agree with my fellow commissioners. So the first time I looked at this, um, I felt like it really needed some warmth. Um, so I also would propose this go to design review. I would ask the applicant that they create some, if they're going for a modern look, maybe some wood siding, some elements of um, some lights, some landscaping that can kind of pull this whole thing together. It just doesn't feel like it's a very modern design. Um, and I agree with the story polls. I think that's just gonna, that's ultimately what we need to do up in the hills.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Goll.
Yeah, I I I think that this is highly lacking in detailing and that it, so I would agree to send it to a designer viewer, but Commissioner uh, Vice Chair Loftus touched on a really good point. You know, an Eichler home in this area could solve a lot of problems. I know it's gonna be a bigger project and budget obviously seems to be one of the parameters for the design here, but an Eichler home solves a lot of problems by being uh, having a flat roof. You can do a two-story style of an Eichler home and keep the profile low. But I, the house is gonna be completely redone, and I, unfortunately, I think a lot of people think, oh, we'll just put a second story on. You know, we'll just put it right on top of the existing walls. Well, talk to your engineer, because that ain't gonna happen. So um, you, you're, there are a lot of costs involved in throwing a second story on a house. But I would agree that this should go to a design reviewer and maybe think about a completely different design than what we're looking at right now.
Okay, um, I'm not in disagreement with those comments. Uh, I would say that the design doesn't hold together very well, and it just looks like it's going for an inexpensive solution. And that's not really the point. And I don't think it's just that we want to spend money, but we do want a design that holds together and and will uh, enhance the neighborhood. Uh, I think when it does come back, it needs more information. You know, the windows need to be solved. I think thinking that you're going to save the aluminum windows, if even if they're that, they might be the vinyl that has been suggested. I don't think that's gonna work. Uh, so that's a cost that's gonna come back later and make this problematic. I think that we need to see the details of the windows and trims. There are no details here of Eve's windows and trims, which are things that we request uh, in our approval. So that needs to be in there so that we know what we're getting. I think the materials need to be flushed out better so that we know, because this is a perfect example of a project that would be underdesigned and and come back with an FYI with a bunch of things missing or a bunch of things done differently. So I would like to see it be very specific uh, in what is being offered. So I think that we have, I I think, I do think that out of a massing standpoint, the solution is trying to be as sensitive as possible to the height and the obstructions. And I, and I can appreciate that there's not too many opportunities to get more square footage without going up. Uh, so you know, they've got something to work with, but I think it, I think it needs a help too. So uh, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I've moved to um, to send this to a designer review consultant, and I, I think it's important that the massing gets solved and it goes through designer review consultant before you do any story polls, right? It would be a waste, it seems to me, to put story polls up for this project when you might end up with something uh, different at the end of designer review.
I'll second the motion. And if I could, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would, you know, just as in the way of direction and and assistance for the applicant, I would as they work through with the designer review consultant, I would ask that they specific, have a specific discussion either with the design review consultant or planning staff or both in regards to what is expected for the windows in regards to simulated true divided lights. Because my concern is if they mistakenly identify the existing windows as aluminum clad windows and say that they're gonna keep them, but they're actually not, they're actually vinyl windows with a simulated mutton between the glass that we generally don't accept, but then they decide that they're gonna match those because they think they've identified something that's acceptable, then we have just sort of a hornet's nest of failure. So I think they should get a grasp on on what the existing windows are and what's not acceptable moving forward and what they're gonna match or or replace with. Not tend to send us with a proposition, but just to end it improperly. Thanks.
Well, a- and I think that the need to really figure out what they're gonna do so that they can price it accurately before they get into this, because again, don't wanna see it get halfway, half-baked and poorly done.
Right.
So, so we have a motion by Vice Chair Loftus and a second by Commissioner Toronas. Uh, any further discussion? Great, let's vote.
Commissioner Camerota.
Aye.
Commissioner Goll.
Aye.
Commissioner Foss.
Aye.
Commissioner Toronas.
Sorry, aye.
Commissioner Say.
Aye.
Vice Chair Loftus.
Aye.
Chair Schmidt.
Hi. Motion carries seven zero zero zero. Okay, um, that concludes our design review study section. Do you have any commissioners' reports?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I could. First of all, I just wanna say thank you for the resolution we had at the beginning of the meeting that was very touching. Entirely unnecessary, but very touching and humbling. I say unnecessary because it's, uh, it's been a pleasure serving on this commission, and it's been a pleasure serving the council. It's, it's been an honor to serve our community and a joy to serve my friends, not the least of which I count all of you as. But I would be remiss if I didn't give a specific thanks to staff, to Kevin and all of the planners, to Bill Maker, who was, came before Kevin and Meg Monroe, who came before Bill. All current and former staff, I wish I could name them all, but I won't because I'm sure I'll forget somebody, and I don't wanna do that. So thank you to all of the staff, because if at any point you feel that it's a thankless work that you do, do please, and Ruben, if you could, Amelia, if you could pass this on, please, don't, don't think that at all, because if it's not specifically expressed often enough, please know that I think every commissioner and every city staff member that you guys support is grateful for what you guys do. Because our city works because of you guys. So, thank you, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Am I allowed to second that?
I think you should have to do a report.
So let's, uh, first of all, yeah, just on behalf of staff, um, Richard, you beat me to it, but on behalf of staff, we just wanted to uh, congratulate you and Commissioner Loftus, and just thank you for um, working with us. It's been a pleasure working together for years or decades in some cases. But um, we've learned so much from you, um, and we'll, we'll continue to take that with us. And we look forward to working you just outside of the commission as well. I mean, there's gonna be other opportunities, I think, where we're run into each other for sure. And um, but truly, it's been an an honor and a pleasure working with you. I will um, I will play that recording, Richard, at our staff meeting tomorrow, because I think it's really special what you said, and I, I, staff will really appreciate that. So uh, thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, like, like I told Rich Sergeant, we're not dying, so. We'll still be around.
Well, we know Rich Sergeant's not dead. We, he's alive, so.
But, but truly and honestly, if there's ever anything that comes up and you guys want some input, feedback or whatever, I know nothing's official, but um, you know, we're around, I'm around.
Yeah, well, you know, SB nine is around and we'll need those uh, diagrams, Richard, so. We'll ca- we'll continue to work with you on that. Um, let's see, with that said, on on April fourth, the city council did um, reappoint Audrey um, to the commission. Congratulations, Audrey.
All right, everybody, I'm back.
Yay. And they did appoint two new planning commissioners, so Chris Heran, I'm not sure if I'm saying is, is uh, very similar to my name, my, my last name, actually, but Heran, and Sean Lowenthal. Uh, so uh, they're excited to start. Um, Chris will be starting, uh, sorry, Sean will be, we're presuming he'll be starting in on the April twenty-fifth meeting. Chris already had a previous business engagement, so he'll start on the ninth. Um, but we're excited to go into the next chapter. Uh, let's see, we do have a joint meeting coming up on April twenty-third, that's Saturday. I, we're still assuming at this point that it's gonna be on Zoom, but um, as we get closer to that date, we'll, we'll let you know about those details. And we do have one FYI tonight, twenty-four eleven Eastern. Uh, if anyone has concerns about that or would like to pull it off for further discussion at a future meeting, uh, let us know. Doesn't look like it. So um, as we close out the meeting, I don't know if any other commissioners want to say any last words to, to our outgoing commissioners while you still have the chance.
I do. I think, I think you, well, um, Will didn't offer the same. I may take you up on it, Richard, the help sometimes. I mean, it's just, it's been great um, to have, to have a real solid, two real solid architects and um, know that we've got others too, but um, the, you've, you have been with us long enough that you have just this continuum and you have the historical references from before that I really appreciate, because we've come a long way as a city, as far as everything from design to everything we do, and um, it's been really valuable. And um, I was trying to think how long you, um, Richard was with Stan Vistika together. That was in some overlap, right? But you had a lot of time together as well. So um, that's going back. It's great, great times. So thank you, really, thank you both of you, but um, definitely take you up on the offer.
Jennifer, I'll, I'll echo the offer, but just know I'll refer you to, to Richard.
Anytime.
Yeah, thank you both. I'll keep it short, but I do appreciate all your input. Um, I didn't always agree with you guys on some things, but um, I think that's part of the beauty of having seven of us up here. So good luck to both of you. I'm sure we'll see you around town, but um, we'll see you soon. Thank you.
I also thank you both. I mean, you guys have been great, and I, um, Richard, we've known each other a very, very long time since the kids played baseball, so. You know, we're long-term, longtime friends in the community and couldn't ask for better friends on the commission. So thank you, everyone, for all your hard work.
And I wanna say, as one of the more junior members of the commission, though I was told in my interview, I'm becoming one of the more senior members of the commission now. Stay in the former. That I have really um, appreciated and respected um, both of your wisdom, your commentary, your very thorough thoughtfulness on every project from so many different aspects beyond just the architectural wisdom that you both have and your expertise and um, and it's really helped me to become a better commissioner for the city. And um, I wish you were staying on longer, because I still have a lot to learn. But I will look you two up for some, some help as needed. But thank you so much for being a great mentor indirectly to me.
And I, I would just say, uh, thank you all. I've enjoyed it a lot. I've learned a lot over the past eight years. But eight years is enough for me. I don't know how Richard did sixteen.
Let me just share real quick, when the, when the city sent me to the this um, design um, conference in in Monterey years ago. I was so proud walking in there with twelve years under my belt, and opening session, they asked, who's here, who here is a first-year commissioner, and several hands were raised. How many have been on their commission four years? Hands were raised. How many eight years, hands raised? And I was so proud. They got to it. How many twelve years? I almost stood up, raised my hand. And then they said sixteen years, and somebody raised their hand, and then they threw twenty years, and a couple guys raised their hand. Then they said twenty-four years, and some guy, and I thought, wow, that is crazy.
So. It's not like this small. You're like, wow.
Six, so sixteen years is, is fine.
Yeah, I mean, we had a commissioner Chuck Mink. He served many, I mean, I don't remember exactly. I think it was in the twenties, twenty-four years, maybe.
Yeah.
Ruth Jacobs, too, I think.
With Jacobs.
Long time, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm not even gonna try.
You could always come back. Like in four years, or you know. There's no limit here. All right, well, Chair, I will let you close out the meeting.
Okay, well, thank you both, uh, and do hope to see you soon. And uh, we'll get this meeting done so that we can all get back to life. So I uh, close this meeting at nine forty-eight PM.
Okay, thanks.
Night, everyone.